Good evening. I'll call this meeting of the Housing Authority of the City of Salem for March 22nd, 2021 to order. If the recorder will please call the roll.
Vice Chair Stapleton?
Here.
Commissioner Anderson?
Present.
Commissioner Phillips?
Here.
Commissioner Liang? Absent. Commissioner Gonzalez?
Here.
Chair Hoi?
Here.
Commissioner Nordike?
Here.
Commissioner Lewis?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. And if you'll join me in the pledge of allegiance, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Commissioner Stapleton, the consent cali-- I'm sorry, we have nobody signed up for a public comment. And Commissioner Stapleton, do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
We do not.
Thank you. Got those reversed, but-- and Commissioner Stapleton, the consent calendar?
Yeah, I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
Thank you.
Moved by Commissioner Stapleton, seconded by Commissioner Phillips. Commissioner Stapleton?
Yes. The consent calendar consists of item 3.1A, which are the March 8th, 2021 draft Salem Housing Authority minutes. Item number 3.3A, authority, a submittal of an application and acceptance of funding if awarded for up to $100,000 through the City of Salem Home Investment Partnership Program to develop the Sequoia Crossing Affordable Housing. Item 3.3B, amendments to the Salem Housing Authority's 2020-21 Public Housing Authority Plan and Annual Capital Fund Plan. And that concludes the consent calendar.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? If the recorder will call for the vote.
Commissioner Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Phillips?
Aye.
Commissioner Liang? Absent. Commissioner Gonzalez?
Aye.
Commissioner Nordike?
Aye.
Commissioner Lewis?
Aye.
Vice Chair Stapleton?
Aye.
Chair Hoi?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. The motion passes. We have no public hearings. We have no special orders of business, but we do have an information report. And I see Ms. Yutz has joined us. Would you like to share with us some highlights from your report, please?
Sure. Good evening. I'm Nicole Yutz. I'm the Housing Administrator for Salem Housing Authority. I just wanted to take note that we did put a quick blurb on this new Sequoia Crossings Affordable Housing Project, which is our main focus at the moment, to try to bring 60 more beautiful units of affordable housing, permanent supportive housing here to Salem. That application, I can officially tell you, is submitted as of tonight for the first round of permanent supportive housing funds. So we are very hopeful. We're very excited. And hopefully, you can see a quick blurb of the rendering and how much effort and work has gone into the architectural design to make that really capture all of the essence that we learned through the Permanent Supportive Housing Institute and put that to paper. So we have hired a CMGC. We have the architect in. We have the grants ready to go. And we're excited to hopefully bring another project to Salem. Beyond that, we do have some more exciting news that we were awarded the ESG COC grants that came through the Continuum of Care Collaborative. So we will be bringing on a few new housing navigators, three to be exact, and it'll also provide them computers and some software and programs to be able to get out there in the field and camps and help navigate into individuals into some permanent stability and housing. On top of that, the ATRAP program continues to be successful. We're staying right at 86%, which is above the national average. Even though it's been a very difficult time in trying to secure more landlords, we're still making progress.
Excellent. I just wanted to congratulate you and your staff on the excellent work so far on the Sequoia Crossings. The rendering is stunning, and I think that'll be a really wonderful place for people to live if we're successful with all of that. And I really appreciate your hard work. And I want to follow up on one of your comments regarding the grant that we were successfully received, or when notified that we're going to be receiving it. I was going to comment on it during council comments at city council, but the Midland Valley homeless alliance with where I'm your representative, I'm the vice chair of that group, applied for a collaborative grant a few months ago, and we have been notified that the Oregon Housing and Community Services intends to award us $5.5 million to help address homelessness in this region. It's not just in the city of Salem. It's a number of our neighboring communities we worked in. It's a really broad partnership of groups and organizations that came together to submit this application. And I'm very excited about it. It's really going to be a game changer. Can't wait to share the details soon. Commissioner Nordike?
Yeah, I just want to follow up on that. What ki-- I know that a lot of grants have a lot of strings attached. What kinds of things would this fund? Would it be like buying land? Would it be rental vouchers? Would it be case management services? Any or all of the above? I'm just curious what that might entail.
So there's going to be a detailed press release coming out soon. And I don't have our fact sheet right in front of me, but it's basically all of those things. There's a hotel voucher program. There's case management. There's rapid rehousing. There's a lot of different elements to it through a lot of different areas. And there'll be a lot of details coming out really soon.
That's awesome.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments from Ms. Yutz? Well, keep up the great work. I know you have been burning the candle at both ends, literally, and I really, really appreciate it. It doesn't-- not everybody notices your work because it's kind of behind the scenes, but I want you to know I notice it, and I appreciate you and your staff very much.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. And with that, I don't see any more business before the Housing Authority for the City of Salem. So we are adjourned.
I call this meeting of the Salem City Council for Monday, March 22nd to order. If you have problems hearing me, wave at me because I'll try to speak up. We had an IT person in today to help us out with this, and apparently it worked. As long as the IT person was here, it worked fine. So we're working on an alternative. The city manager apparently is an expert in this, and he's going to help me out with this thing. Now, if the recorder would please call a roll.
Counselor Stapleton?
I'm here.
Counselor Anderson?
So am I.
Counselor Phillips?
Here.
Counselor Liang? Absent. Counselor Gonzalez?
Here.
Counselor Hoi?
Here.
Counselor Nordike?
Here.
Counselor Lewis?
Here.
Mayor Bennett?
Here.
Thank you.
Do we have any additions or deletions, counselor?
Yes, I move approval of additions and deletions to the agenda.
Second.
Seconded by Anderson.
That's item 3.3D, the priority bills for the 2021 legislative session. And item 5A, amending the emergency declaration related to unsheltered residents to allow for a limited managed outdoor camp at city-owned property at 2640 Portland Road Northeast. We'll need to vote on that, sir.
Making myself a note here. Okay. Recorder, please call a roll.
Counselor Hoi?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Counselor Liang? Absent. Counselor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Counselor-- or Mayor Bennett?
Aye.
Thank you.
Now's an opportunity for the council. Counselor have a comment? Just one second on this. Courtney, I had understood that Counselor Liang might have a statement this evening. She'd like to present it this time. Do you know if she's going to be with us?
Counselor Liang has not yet joined the meeting.
You give her a call and see if she wants to. Would that be okay?
Sure, I'll try. Thank you.
Because we're going to go buy her spot here. Okay. Now, Counselor Nordike.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So a few things I want to comment on tonight. First of all, I know on our agenda this evening is a proclamation concerning Child Abuse Prevention Month. As someone who has handled child abuse cases for about six years as the Oregon Department of Justice, I've kept a lot of child molesters behind bars. And I can tell you that child abuse is real and much more prevalent than many of us realize. So I look forward to the proclamation, and I want to thank the mayor for accepting and providing that proclamation tonight. There are plenty of ways to educate yourself about how to prevent child abuse, and I recommend reaching out to our local child abuse assessment center, the Liberty House, for more information. Counselor Stapleton and I recently participated in one of their free trainings that they put on, which is all available by Zoom, of course. And so it's a great training for anyone who works with children, interacts with children, teachers, coaches, mentors, you name it. There are a lot of folks who I think would benefit from that training, and I thought it was fantastic. And as I said, it's available free of charge from the Liberty House. So I recommend that. Moving on, I want to express solidarity with our Asian American and Pacific Islander community. Unfortunately, we keep hearing over and over again about threats, about hate crimes and violence perpetuated against members of the community around the country. And as Dr. King said, injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. And I consider attack on any member of the community when it's on gender or color of skin or some other immutable characteristic to really be an attack on all of us. But condemnation of hate is not enough. And I recommend, folks, if you are-- if you see bias, we have at the Oregon Department of Justice a Bias Response Hotline. That phone number is 1-844-924-2427. The Bias Response Hotline is provided by DOJ, and it connects people with trauma-informed hotline advocates who are trained in crisis intervention and can provide bias response advocacy, including assistance in reporting a biased crime to law enforcement. The hotline advocate will inquire if you would like or need an interpreter. They have access to interpreters in over 240 languages via a program called Language Link. Unfortunately, calls to the bias hotline are up. Last year, 2020, we had 1,099 calls, which averages to about 91 calls a month. But here we are, just about two months into 2021. Well, we're now into March, but they now have tallied the reports of bias for the first two months of the year 2021, and that is 249 reports, which comes to a monthly average of about 124 calls. This is a disturbing pattern that seems to be on the rise across the nation. But please avail yourself of the bias hotline. Also, earlier tonight, in our capacity on the Salem Housing Authority, we voted to authorize a middle of an application to further our support for our Sequoia Crossings program. I'm very excited about this. I know the rest of the council is too. So I congratulate Nicole Yutz and her entire team on continuing to move the ball forward. This is going to be a real game changer in affordable housing for some of the most vulnerable people among us. While we're on the line to affordable housing, I am recently with United Way Leadership Team and Counselor Hoi to discuss tiny home options. More to come on that, but that is in pursuit of tiny home options for low-income seniors. We all know seniors who are on a fixed income. So having affordable housing for that vulnerable population is crucial. And last but not least, I recently toured the Rotary Amphitheater with Counselor Stapleton. I really feel that this Rotary Amphitheater is going to be a real game changer for downtown, for Salem in general. It's literally going to put us on the map for performing arts that are touring throughout the Pacific Northwest. We all know of many great musical acts who have passed us by. And I think that with this amphitheater, once it's up and running, once COVID restrictions have eased, it's going to bring kinds of musical acts and other performing.
Counselor Nordike, I think it rose up on your screen.
Summer, maybe in July or so. The other thing I would say is that, you know, with-- I anticipate this being an extremely popular venue, and we, as a city, will need to come up with a way to balance the needs between public access and private groups who want to access what I think is going to become one of the signature landmarks in Salem. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A month or so ago, the city council passed a resolution condemning institutional and systemic racism and pledging to do what we could to counteract its nefarious effects on the fabric of our society. Recent events in Atlanta highlight our need to condemn racism in all its aspects. The murder of Asian Americans is a predictable result of our country's sordid racial history. As a council, we should do all we can to ensure that Salem is anti-racist in words and deeds. There are secondary and tertiary concerns here. The first of these is our country's equally long history of institutional and systemic misogyny, which should also be equally condemned. The second of these concerns is the rather shockingly obvious fact that the white alleged killer of Asian American women was captured by law enforcement without injury, just as were many civilian white killers of people of color, the white men in Charleston, in Florida, in Georgia, and countless other cities. This is often in stark contrast to the violent treatment, including death of people of color who are accused of crimes. Thankfully, this is not at all the case in Salem with our excellent police department and its individual officers. We should do all we can to maintain this high standard of equal treatment of all people in Salem. I know and am confident that we will.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Liang, you're with us. Would you like to speak?
Hi, everybody. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak briefly. I really appreciate the opportunity to do so. So it's now been officially been one year since the start of the COVID-19 pandemic. Our community has done what it has can do so far to stop the spread of COVID, and for that, I am thankful. As other counselors have mentioned so far today, a month ago, we have passed a resolution calling racism as a public health crisis. Last year, we initially had issued statements, and we continue to do so, calling about police brutality and being in solidarity with Black Lives Matter. Now, we're witnessing a rise in hate crimes against our Asian communities. There was a statement that was released through my nonprofit, the Micronesian Islander Community, and I wanted to read a portion of it, which I think is important and relevant today. Now, as leaders, we're often sharing spaces, resources, and intersectional experiences, especially with our Asian counterparts, under the Asian and Pacific founder community. And as such, as an elected leader, I myself expressed solidarity against a rise in anti-Asian violence and hate, highlighted by the recent events that explicitly have targeted those in the Asian community. I am angry that these hateful acts are continuing to occur and are continuing to be perpetuated against our communities. We witnessed the racist and systematic crimes from the murders of eight women in Georgia to the increase of attacks and robberies against Asian elders. I demand that those perpetrators be held accountable to the fullest extent of the law. These tragedies are a reminder that the fight is not over, and we demand that the state of Oregon and the federal government formally declare that racism is a public health crisis. We do not condone these acts of violence. We do not condone racism. We stand in solidarity with the Asian community. Asian communities are continuing to face discrimination, increased hostility, and violence against them in the United States. We encourage everyone to be mindful, to be supportive of each other, and to stay well in this time of crisis. There's some information and resources that people could definitely reach out to. There's the Oregon Department of Justice, and where the people could report hate crimes. There's also, of course, contacting the local police, as well as the Salem Human Rights Commission. There's also some other resources, specifically StopAAPIHate@stopaaapihate.org. And also understand that I understand that there's some solidarity action or calls to action, specifically from the White House, the memorandum condemning and combating racism, xenophobia, and intolerance against Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders in the U.S. I hope that everyone who's joining us and watching us today, as well as those who are present, you know, continue to support one another and to know that we're not alone, that we're in this together. Thank you.
Your insight and your thoughts on this. Counselor Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mayor. Wu Di Ming Xi, Jose Gonzalez, which means my name is in a Chinese traditional language. And I wanted to highlight this language because the people who use it are wanting us to hear their voices today. And I've spent time in Shanghai, China. And the main thing I wanted to share is, no matter what you think of the government of China and what it stands for, I've met the actual people that live there, and they're just like us. Nice, hardworking, and just want to provide for their family. You know, so luckily, I'm lucky that I'm able to base my opinion on reality and not what the news and others share. Thank you for that.
There we go. I'm sorry. How about this thing?
We're not sure who you called on, Mr. Mayor. We couldn't hear you.
Okay, just a sec. You hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. You-- I called on you.
Oh, great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
First, I just want to start by thanking Counselor Liang for her passion and her words and for coming here tonight to speak to us and to speak to the community. I very much appreciate them. And I join her, and I'm very sad for the recent events. But I just I want to acknowledge her anger and her outrage and validate it. It's not a good situation we're in right now in our nation. I spoke a little bit ago about, at the Housing Authority meeting, about a grant where the Midland Valley Housing Alliance has been notified of the intent to award by the Oregon Housing and Community Services Department. And I now have the list of potential projects that would be funded should this grant come to fruition, which it looks like it will be. So there's going to be 11 new street outreach workers to engage 100 unaccompanied minors through home youth services.
At LSU, I think individually, you lined them up, and you said, "Our--
I don't know what that was. There's an emergency shelter that'll allow three day centers in Salem, Silverton, and Woodburn to provide services to an average of 80 people per day that they don't currently get to provide services to. There's like an overnight shelter that would allow folks, an increase in overnight shelters, and there'll be hotel and motel sheltering. The Center for Hope and Safety is going to be able to use some of the money for their work, Family Promise, Sable House. The winter duration sheltering program will be upgraded, and then modular sheltering as well. And then also a rapid rehousing program through a variety of the programs I previously mentioned. So it's $5.5 million coming to our community as it looks right now, and it's very exciting. It will be a game changer for us. So just wanted to-- there will be a press release coming out from the Midland Valley Homeless Alliance very soon to really provide all the details, but that gives you kind of an idea of what's headed our way.
Great. It's just really good news, counselor. And thank you again very much for your work on this as vice chairman of the U.S. Senate. That's a lot of work, and there's sure a lot of good stuff going on. So thank you.
Thank you. It's been a really great opportunity. There's a great collaboration and coalition of folks from all over the Polk Marion region that come together to work on it. So thank you.
Anyone else? Yes. Counselor Stapleton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I too wanted to acknowledge Counselor Liang and just validate all that she said and her feelings and to let her know that I am with her as well. I wanted to just give some stats that I had heard that were very shocking and also really great for me because it just kind of expanded my understanding of what this group of people is dealing with. So nationwide, reports of hate against AAPI group have increased 149% over the last year, and women are twice as likely to be at the end of that than men. So something, obviously, that I care deeply about. 68% are verbal attacks, 11 are physical attacks, 20% are shunning, and 8.5 are refusal of business, and 6.5 are online harassment. And it really breaks my heart that the West Coast has really been in this spotlight for different videos that have gone viral, and, you know, people spitting on people or coughing on people. It's just simply, it's just outrageous. I also wanted to acknowledge our students at Willamette. We've gotten an email. Counselor Anderson and I, just of their own fear right now, is really, really heightened. And so I just wanted to call them out, let them know that we're thinking of you, and we're trying to do all that we can, and we really condemn hate in all of its forms, and we see you, and we understand your fear, and it's real. And so we're doing all that we can here. And I also wanted to say that we have a really great, a lot of really important things on the agenda. Mr. Mayor, I wanted to let you know that I have planted about 50 milkweed plants for you. I won't hand them all over to you, but I will donate them in your name to whoever wants them.
Hand them over to Peter Fernandez. He actually spends his lunch hour planting milkweed here.
Okay. Okay. So yeah, that's what I wanted to say. Thank you so much for taking the time for me.
Great. Thank you very much. Yes, Counselor Phillips? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I just really want to take the time to echo everything else that my fellow counselors have said and really express a debt of gratitude for Counselor Liang sharing her lived experience with us and her leadership with us on this body. I think her words are incredibly important for all of us to hear, and I definitely hear them. I think we all do. You know, I don't think it's an accident that just a month ago, we adopted as part of the strategic plan that phrase that we are, as an organization, the City of Salem, anti-racist. So I'm sure that we are all listening, and we're all trying to do our best to counteract that that's happening. And I absolutely have heard the same data. It's been reported widely that Virginia Stapleton, Counselor Stapleton just brought up, and just, you know, to push back. It's nonsense to think that there's any correlation between, you know, the Asian community and the virus. This is now a worldwide pandemic. The two are unrelated. Now, I do typically do a bit of an update regarding the pandemic and COVID-19. I do really want to thank Mayor Bennett for, you know, letting me share the mayor monthly video update with the community. I enjoyed being part of that process and having an opportunity to kind of let people know that we are making progress. We really are on the other side of a mountain in terms of cases happening per day. The winter surge is dramatically, like, it's basically gone. We're not back to normal yet, but we're back to kind of a steady state of the early fall. So we've really seen progress. It was just really encouraging to see nationally and locally the number of vaccinations happening. It took us only 58 days as a country to achieve that 100 million vaccination effort of injections, and it was the goal of doing 100 million in 100 days. So it was nearly half the time needed. So there really is success. The ability to do this ramp up of a vaccine distribution is going very well. Over a million people in Oregon have received at least one vaccine, and over a half a million have received both doses. So it's still pretty simple. You know, it's not over. We're not completely out of the woods. Wear a mask when you're outside of your bubble, social distance as per the guidelines, avoid large group gatherings, and when it's your turn, get a shot. There are three safe and effective vaccines that have been authorized for use in the United States. States. You know, reach out to the Oregon Health Authority, like in a search engine on the website, or go to Salem Health, and more and more, you know, ask your local clinic or a local pharmacy. With the newest vaccine, it has some, you know, it's easier to store, doesn't require the cold storage, so it's going to be more widely available. So, you know, when it's your turn, get your shot. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Phillips. I really appreciate that. I was reading recently a report on who are the most effective spokesmen on encouraging people to get these shots. It's not politicians, it's not, you know, sort of the standard. It is a doctor in their community, best their family doctor, and I think since you're a doctor at the emergency room and sort of, God forbid, you're a doctor for all of us if we make it through the doors to your area of practice. So thank you for so strongly endorsing getting vaccinated. It's really important. So thank you. Anyone else? Mister, where's Steve? Wonder if he can, just a sec. Steve Powers?
I'm here, Mayor. Unfortunately, there's something now wrong with my video. Can people hear me?
Yes. I've got your, I've got your audio, so you've got my video. Apparently, we're doing real well down here.
I just wanted to highlight quickly for counsel, and I apologize if my face has taken over your screen, but I want to lean in so you can hear me. The tree report that's on the agenda is not post ice storm, it is pre-ice storm. So please take it easy on our staff. We continue with the cleanup. We have eight to 10 crews out throughout the city, and we are also shifting now more resources into the parks and Pioneer Cemetery. We are continuing with the wood chip piles that have been extremely popular at Bush's Pasture Park and at the State Fairgrounds. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Powers?
Nothing else. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to go ahead with some proclamations. We had three of them arrive this week, this week, first day of the month. The first is Child Abuse Prevention Month proclamation. Kelly Perosa from Prevention Program Director at Liberty House is here to accept the proclamation. Let me read it to you, and then we'll hear from Kelly. Whereas every child deserves to live in a safe, loving, and caring family environment, and whereas in 2019, there were 13,674 reported victims of child abuse and neglect in Oregon, and of those reported cases, 1,238 were victims in Marion County. And whereas we stand together as individuals, organizations, and government agencies to commit to preventing child abuse in our county by raising awareness throughout the community and by educating and supporting caregivers, and whereas we assert that strong families and safe, stable, and nurturing environments free from violence, abuse, and neglect are essential for children's optimal growth and success, which ensures a secure future for our communities, where the needs of children are a priority and the needs of families are met. Now therefore, I check Bennett, Mayor of the City of Salem, to hereby proclaim April 2021 Child Abuse Prevention Month and ask the community to observe this month with programs and activities that commit to protecting our children, dated this 22nd day of March. And with that, I'd like to turn to Kelly, and if you have any thoughts, Kelly, you want to share any information, please do, and thank you for joining us to accept this.
Well, that is my pleasure, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much. And I am representing, I know it's Liberty House, I am representing the Marion County Child Abuse Prevention Month Committee.
Ah, great.
It's an honor to be representing about 20 different organizations who serve children coming together every year to, you know, collectively try to get things going in our community. And so especially thank you, City of Salem, who has recently joined us. I've been in conversations with Mayor Bennett, with Councillors Nordike and Stapleton, and it's just been very powerful for me this year. I've been on the committee for six years to see that collaboration and action. So be sure to ask Counselor Stapleton about Paint the Town Blue. It won't take all the time, but there's a car parade on April 2nd. We would love to see elected officials and just people who love Salem to participate in that. But I also just kind of want to pause because we heard some startling statistics in that proclamation. I appreciate you putting them in there and reading that. But I want to leave you with one more. Most children don't tell anyone they are unsafe. Most children do not tell them, tell us that someone in their life is hurting them. We need to be their protectors. We need to be their responders. We need to be their healers. We need to be the ones to give them a voice. So I thank you so much for claiming again, proclaiming again, April being Child Abuse Prevention Month awareness in the City of Salem, and I call you to action. I challenge you to get involved somehow and take it to the next step. Get involved with Paint the Town Blue. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much, Kelly, and thank you for the tremendous work you all are doing on the committee as well as, of course, family building blocks. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
This one is the Monarch Butterfly Pledge. For those of you who have been to these before, and I believe it's being received by the Byerlys, and I'm not sure if they're here. Yes, they, yes, they are. Ken's here. Okay. Whereas the Monarch Butterfly is one of the most iconic and studied butterflies in North America wildly, widely, and probably wildly too, admired for its beauty, and whereas the Monarch Butterfly is extremely beneficial, pollinating many cultivated flowers and crops and serving as an indicator species for the ecological health of large geographic areas. And whereas the Monarch Butterfly's annual migration, which has been described as one of the most spectacular in the insect world, is now classified as a threatened phenomenon by the International Union for the Conservation of Nature. And whereas the western population of monarchs, which overwinter in California, has declined by more than 99% since the 1980s, from an estimated 4.5 million monarchs to less than 30,000 counted at overwintering sites in 2019. And whereas a major reason for the decline is the widespread loss of the milkweed plant, the only plant monarch butterflies lay their eggs on, as well as it being the monarch's primary larval food source. And whereas the entire community can play a critical role in providing habitat for monarchs and other pollinators by planting milkweed and nectar plants and reducing pesticide use. Now therefore, I check Bennett, Mayor of the City of Salem, to hereby proclaim March 22nd, 2021, that I will continue to participate in the Mayor's Monarch Pledge, and through the signing of the National Wildlife Federation Mayor's Monarch Pledge, commit the City of Salem to voluntarily help restore habitat for the monarch and encourage all people of Salem to do the same. Signed, Chuck Bennett, Mayor. Mr. Riley, do you want to?
Yes. On behalf of the Glen Gibson Creek Watershed Council, we're very honored to participate with the City of Salem. The city has been an incredible partner in developing pollinator gardens in many of the parks in West Salem and have been very cooperative in the development of an oak savanna on part, a reservoir site that Peter didn't need, but has been a great opportunity to help both monarchs but also all pollinators. And we really appreciate the willingness of the city to participate in a very constructive way, and we'll continue to do so. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ken. There's been, I noted a lot of plantings around City Hall, the real change in plantings aimed at supporting this international effort really to restore the monarch to a more robust species than we're seeing with only 30,000 left, which I find just shocking figure, so. And any one, and any of you, well, we do know Virginia has a lot of extra milkweed.
And we'd be glad to put them out in the ground for you.
Excellent. There's your, there's your man.
That's great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Good. Okay, and then finally, it's Arbor Month, and I'd like to acknowledge that with, whereas the City of Salem is one of only 17 cities in the country to have been a charter participant in the Tree City USA program since 1976, and the first city in Oregon to receive the Tree City USA 45th Year Award from the Arbor Day Foundation. And whereas for the 45th consecutive year, the City of Salem has met the requirements for the Tree City USA due to its urban forestry program supported by a minimum dollar per capita of public funds, tree ordinance, and formal Arbor Month activities. And whereas the City of Salem is also a sterling city with 15 Tree City USA Growth Awards in recognition of the city exceeding the goals established by the Arbor Day Foundation. Now therefore, I check Bennett, Mayor of the City of Salem, to hereby proclaim April 2021 as Salem's Arbor Month and encourage all people to participate in community school and private observances during this, during this Arbor Month. And feel free to start replanting those trees you might have lost during that ice storm. It's a, it's a great time. March is particularly a good time of year, probably the last of the months this year to really get your planting in in time, so good luck. Okay, thank you very much. We have no one here to provide public comment on any of the issues we're dealing with tonight, so we'll be moving right on through. So it's a consent calendar first. Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Move approval of the consent calendar with the exception of item 3.3B pulled by Counselor Anderson.
Okay. You want to go, who's gonna?
Second.
Second by Trevor Phillips, okay?
All right. So we have item 3.1A, the March 8, 2021 Draft City Council Minutes, and 3.1B, the March 15, 2021 Draft Joint City Council and Community Engagement Audit Steering Committee Work Session Minutes. We have item 3.2A, library parcade policy for three hours of parking for library visitors. Item 3.2B, extension of emergency utility assistance and update on outreach and assistance provided to customers during the pandemic. Item 3.3A, First Amendment to the Lease Agreement between the City of Salem and Capitol Community Television. Item 3.3C, Recommended Appointments and Reappointments to the Citizens Advisory Traffic Commission, Salem Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Salem Planning Commission, Salem Public Art Commission, and Salem Public Library Advisory Board. And three, item 3.3D, the Party Bills for the 2021 Oregon Legislative Session.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any discussion on any of the items? Okay, if the recorder would please call the roll.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor, Counselor, I'm sorry, Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Counselor Leong absent. Counselor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay, those pass. Now we'll go to public hearings. Start with 21100, and who's, do we have a staff person who's going to take us through this? There we go. Hello, Glen.
Hello.
You ready to go?
Do we have, do we have the city recorder first?
Yes, I need to announce it. The city council will conduct a public hearing concerning amending Salem Revised Code Chapter 601 Flood Plane Overlay Zone to approve Salem's rating within the Federal Emergency Management Agency's Community Rating System. The criteria is applicable to the proposed amendments are found in Salem Revised Code Section 110.085. Testimony must be directed towards the identified criteria or other criteria the person believes to apply to the decision. The hearing will be conducted with a staff presentation first, followed by other interested persons. Neighborhood associations are limited to five minutes per association for testimony. Individuals testifying are limited to three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Glen.
Hey, good evening, Mayor Bennett and city councillors. My name is Glen Davis, and I'm the Chief Development Engineer and the Flood Plane Administrator for the Public Works Department. In order to explain why we're proposing ordinance number 121, I need to give some background about the flood plane management program and the city and the community rating system. So, hold on. There. So the federal government administers the National Flood Insurance Program, or NFIP, and most cities and counties and tribes, nations participate in this NFIP, over 22,000 communities in all. And the federal government sets minimum standards that all communities need to meet, and they cannot obtain federal loans or disaster funding or flood insurance unless they participate in the NFIP. And within the NFIP is a voluntary incentive program called the Community Rating System, or CRS. It's like an honors program within the NFIP, and those who participate are given credit points in areas where communities exceed minimum standards. So the incentive provided to a community comes through discounts to their flood insurance premiums. The better your score in the program, the higher your flood insurance discounts. So Salem first joined the CRS in 2008 as a Class 8 community, and the incentive then was a 10% reduction in all of Salem's flood insurance premiums. We've continued to improve through the years to a Class 5, noting that the class numbers get lower as your scores get better. Class 5 is a 25% discount. It's the highest CRS score in Oregon, and we share that score with a few other cities. So the way that a community improves its score is to accrue a cumulative point total based on a scoring system established by FEMA. And points are available as an incentive from a wide array of flood plane management activities, includes public information programs and stormwater facility maintenance and flood plane management planning and a variety of other options. And in addition to this cumulative point scoring, there are specific classes that have mandatory prerequisites, and those are Class 6 and 4 and 1. So regardless of your point total, you cannot reach Class 6 or 4 or 1 unless you meet every prerequisite for that class. And that Class 4 limitation has limited Salem for the past few years because we already reached the 3,000 points we needed in our last audit by FEMA, but we had not yet met all four of the Class 4 prerequisites. So tonight's ordinance is our last step in meeting all of those Class 4 prerequisites. So anyone paying flood insurance premiums in Salem should see additional discounts on their flood insurance within a year or so, once this is passed. So another significant implication of meeting the Class 4 prerequisites is it opens the door for us to search for more points to improve to Class 3, and staff has a goal of reaching that Class 3 level within the next couple of years. And if we're successful, then flood insurance discounts will increase to 35%. And some have asked if all this effort is worth the trouble. I just wanted to add that as a Class 4 community, Salem residents will save a total of about $386,000 per year or $397 per flood insurance policy. And if we're successful in improving to Class 3, that would increase the savings to $450,000 per year or $463 per policy. So not only are the benefits significant, but the costs to the community are actually quite small. I've led this program for about 15 years, and it's a small part of what I do. Robin Dahlke is another flood plane manager who assists in the program. So between the two of us, we have less than one full-time equivalent employee. So this program is mostly all positives with very few negatives. And the one last comment about the CRS program is there are 22,000 communities that participate in the NFIP, and if we reach Class 3, we will be among the top 12, ranked among 22,000 in the nation. So Salem has a top-notch flood plane management program, not just because of one or two people, but we have dozens of people on city staff who do great work every day. And we also have a council, this council and previous councils, who have given bipartisan support- who have given bipartisan support to good floodplain management. So the CRS program is why we are proposing ordinance number one twenty one.
Very good. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Glenn? We don't have, as I said before, we don't have any public signed up on this. So, any questions? Okay, Counsel Hoy, do you have a motion?
I believe that we're going to do that under number seven, aren't we, or am I mistaken?
I guess. Says here, advance to second reading for enactment is what I'm, what my note tells me.
Mr. Mayor and Council President Hoy, yeah, it does appear as an ordinance. So you can, you can take the council, the staff recommendation right now just to advance it, and you'll conduct second reading later on at the agenda.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. I apologize. I move we accept staff recommendation and advance to second reading for enactment.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Second.
Second by Stapleton. Okay, any, any discussion?
No.
Okay, would you call the roll then?
Counsel Lewis?
Aye.
Counsel Stapleton?
Aye.
Counsel Anderson?
Aye.
Counsel Phillips?
Aye.
Counsel LeYoung, absent. Counsel Gonzalez?
Aye.
Counsel Hoy?
Aye.
Counsel Nordike?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay. Motion passes. And then four B, Ruthie, do you want to take us into that one?
City council will now conduct a public hearing to consider resolution number two zero two one dash nine to amend the Trelstead reimbursement district by lowering the district fees based on actual construction costs. Individuals testifying must provide their name and address or ward. Individuals are limited to three minutes of testimony. Thank you.
Again, we have no public testimony, but we do have a staff report.
Okay. Am I visible?
Yes, you are.
Okay, sorry for the delay. Good evening again. I'm also Glenn Davis. I'm still the chief development engineer in the public performance. And resolution twenty twenty-one dash nine is simply reducing the reimbursement fee for the Trelstead reimbursement district. But before discussing those details, I want to give a brief introduction into developer financed city infrastructure. So the most common source of infrastructure financing by developers is system development charges, or SDCs. These funds are limited to five types of infrastructure. Parks, transportation, water, wastewater, and stormwater. SDCs are collected when development permits are issued one building at a time. And then those combined resources are pooled to build large infrastructure projects. So as a simple illustration, parks SDCs today are four thousand three hundred seventy-five dollars for a single-family home. After one hundred homes are built, then the city has four hundred and thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars to spend on parks infrastructure needed to serve those new developments. So next, I'll briefly explain some background about the SDC methodology and introduce the purpose for reimbursement districts. So we use our infrastructure master plans to calculate growth costs and growth units in order to determine our cost per unit of growth that we charge as an SDC. This is the same kind of calculation we use for reimbursement districts as well. So to use stormwater as an example, the growth costs are stormwater facility costs, and the growth units are impervious surfaces. So the cost per unit of growth for the SDC is based on the growth costs of stormwater projects citywide divided by the growth units, which is the total square footage of new impervious surface yet to be constructed citywide. So the SDC amount charged to each development project is that cost per unit of growth. So by state law, SDCs can be used only for capital projects that add capacity for growth, not fixing existing deficiencies. So it's common that capital projects are partially eligible for SDCs and require other funding. So developers will often be required to build facilities larger than is needed for their developments. And these developers pay upfront to build the facilities as part of their development projects, and they get reimbursed by SDCs after their costs are certified, but only for a portion of the cost off. So when these capital projects are partially eligible for reimbursement, then reimbursement districts are a good source for additional funding. And lastly, SDC fee amounts are uniform citywide. And this is significant because infrastructure costs can vary depending on where you are in town. And this cost variability can often cause financial shortages that can be augmented with reimbursement district fees. So the reimbursement districts are one resource to help address some of these financial shortages. And a common use of reimbursement districts occurs when a developer builds a major project that's partially eligible for SDCs, and that unreimbursed portion of the cost can be distributed among all properties that benefit from improvement. And like SDCs, reimbursement fees are collected only when a property develops and generates those growth units. So it's not like a tax or a lien. It's only charged to the neighbors when it is a development project. So now to our matter at hand, in amending this reimbursement district, this district relates to street improvements constructed at the intersection of Trelstead and thirty-six, shown in red on the screen, and those were required for this Oregon State Police Facility. This is at the northeast quadrant of the intersection of I five and Kewa. So here is the intersection before that state police facility. And then shown in white are the changes that were made to the intersection.
I don't think we have that up yet, do we?
The changes for the police facility, this is the new curvature, and this is actually a current map showing those changes. So the, those changes were made to that road, and that's the current aerial photo. So to explain the change in the reimbursement fee, I'll go back because this, this district was adopted before those improvements were made. And so now we have actual costs, and I'm going to go through and explain that, and I'll use that same equation we used to describe SDC. So first we'll talk about growth units in the district. So the district boundary that was adopted in the original district.
I didn't get it.
And those boundaries are Interstate five, railroad tracks on the east, and two on the south. So that's the current district.
That mine, it just pops up.
That's unchanged. And our traffic engineering staff recommended that there are nine thousand three hundred and fifty-two vehicle trips generated within that district, and that is unchanged. So for the unreimbursed costs, I'm going to point out that only a small portion of the improvement is SDC eligible because of the new turn lanes add capacity, but the reconfiguration of the intersection is not eligible. So initially, the estimated costs were five hundred and two thousand six hundred and seventy-four dollars. And now, after the cost was certified, that, that amount dropped significantly to two hundred eighty-five thousand seven hundred and thirty-one in unreimbursed costs. So showing that in our equation, we see the unreimbursed costs were reduced. And then dividing that by the unreimbursed cost by growth units, the reimbursement district fee has been reduced from fifty-three dollars and seventy-six cents to thirty dollars and fifty-five cents. And those are to be paid with each development, and those who have already paid would see a refund in their overpayment. So if the staff recommends something.
Okay. Counsel Hoy?
Yes.
Do you want to move staff recommend?
Yeah. Do you want to stop sharing your screen, Mr. Davis, please? Thank you. I move city council adopt resolution number twenty twenty-one dash nine approving the adjustment of the Trelstead reimbursement district fee to reflect actual construction costs after conducting a public hearing on the matter.
Second.
Second.
Who seconded first?
I do, as the former chair of the SDC.
Okay, okay. Yeah, it's your turn.
Louis Phillips.
Anderson seconded it.
I'll let Anderson go. It's my word. I'll let Anderson go.
He was not going to be a happy camper if you didn't let him go on that. Okay. Do you want to talk about it all, Chris?
Well, I just have one comment, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. I, I had a conversation with Counselor Phillips yesterday regarding reimbursement districts, and I just want to apologize because I went into a lot more detail than Mr. Davis did, and I went in, I had several more graphs. And I apologize that I didn't just breeze through it like Mr. Davis did. So anyway, I apologize, Mr. Phillips.
Okay. Any, anyone else? Okay, please call the roll.
Counsel Stapleton?
Aye.
Counsel Anderson?
Aye.
Counsel Phillips?
Aye.
Counsel LeYoung, absent. Counsel Gonzalez?
Aye.
Counsel Hoy?
Aye.
Counsel Nordike?
Aye.
Counsel Lewis?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Now, special orders of business, all I have right now is three point three B, Counselor Anderson, is that the one you pulled?
Yes, it is, Mr. Mayor. I move the staff recommendation on the purchase and sale agreement for the property located at thirteen seventy Wallace Road Northwest.
Second.
Second by Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I pulled this after I looked at it a bit because this relates to an issue that has been before the council for a long time. I think Counsel Lewis and I are the ones who, as well as you, Mr. Mayor, are the ones who have been here from the beginning. And the issue is, what do we do with Marine Drive at the south end? Do we run it down Fifth Avenue or Fifth Street? I'm not sure, Fifth Avenue, Fifth Street, which is pretty much north-south, or do we curve it over to the, to the east and go between the Pioneer Village there and the park? And the council direction has been to use some money left over from the two thousand eight bond to acquire the right-of-way north of where Fifth Street comes in, would come in. And if you look at this one, it acquires that, but it also swings out just a little bit to the east on that property where potentially it could end up, ending up on the, on the other side of Pioneer Village in between the park. And I don't object to buying the part that goes to, to Fifth Avenue. And we're only talking about sixty thousand dollars here, so it's not that we're spending a whole lot of money. I just want to say that if, if some, if the staff comes back at some later point and says, let's continue buying right-of-way to the right-hand side of this, that is, to set Marine Drive going east and then going south to the east of Pioneer Village and coming into Camille Street. I, I will not be in favor of that, but I'm certainly in favor of this purchase because it does start the right-of-way as it goes north from Fifth Avenue where it intersects to the property.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Lewis?
Yes, I'll, I'll support the motion. Anything that will bring Marine Drive and the thirty years that we've been working on it to fruition is something that I should be supporting. I, I adamantly disagree with Counsel Anderson, and I've mentioned this before. Even the day where Counselor Kaiser proposed this. If the city council truly wants to address Marine Drive, then do it through the transportation plan. But as it exists right now, Marine Drive starts at Glen Creek and moves north.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Ruthie, would you call the roll?
Counsel Anderson?
Aye.
Counsel Phillips?
Aye.
Counsel LeYoung, absent. Counsel Gonzalez?
Aye.
Counsel Hoy?
Aye.
Counsel Nordike?
Aye.
Counsel Lewis?
Aye.
Counsel Stapleton?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Okay, well, I don't have any other special orders. We'll go to information.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize. We have item five A that was an addition.
Five A.
It's the amendment to the emergency declaration.
Right. Okay, you want to go ahead and move that?
Yes, I move city council adopt resolution number twenty twenty-one dash eleven to amend the declaration of emergency extended by resolution number twenty twenty dash forty-nine related to unsheltered residents.
Second.
Second by?
Nordike.
Nordike. Thank you.
We have some questions. I believe maybe the city attorney or the city manager would like to maybe make a few comments first, and then.
Sure. Go ahead. One of you.
Thank you, counsel. This, this matter is before you, and I, and thank you for adding it to the agenda as a late addition. We continue to search for suitable sites to help our unhoused neighbors. The Portland Road site has been identified as a feasible location for vehicle camping as well as shelter camping. As you might recall, through the money that was authorized by, by city council earlier this year, we have purchased twenty what are known as pallet shelters. We believe the Portland Road site might be, is very likely a suitable site for use of those shelters, secure tents that will provide a, a dry, secure place for, for people. Gretchen Bennett is on the call, and she can go into more, more detail. City Attorney Atchison can explain the mechanics of why this is before you in the form that it is. The bottom line, the, the summary is, it's, it's a step that we're recommending in our ongoing efforts to locate and cite additional shelter for our unsheltered neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not sure which of the two of you, Mr. Atchison, do you have anything you need to say on this?
Mr. Mayor, I don't have anything prepared, but if there's questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, if there's any questions, right. Gretchen, do you want to speak to this at all?
Also, happy to welcome questions. You bet.
Okay. Well, we got three people ready to take questions. Anyone have any questions for them? Let me see. Any hands again? Ah, there we go. Counsel Nordike.
Thank you. Gretchen, can you tell us a little bit about the staffing and security that would be provided if this resolution were to pass for a temporary shelter at Portland Road?
You know what? That would actually be something I'd want to be able to come back and report on more completely. This was a very, we've been continuing to look for locations. All the while, we had anticipated this purpose at Portland Road many months ago, back when we entered into an agreement with a community action agency. And so are, still in our feasibility stage and in the discussion stage of, you know, will it be feasible? Is council interested, you know? And then we would want to clarify those details. I am expecting and my understanding based on the operation that is most similar and recently that there would be twenty-four-seven staff as well as twenty-four-seven security on-site. That's my understanding and expectation, but we're not that far along yet in, in the discussions. This, this has been a very emergent conversation.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Counsel Nordike.
That's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Hoy?
Thank you. I was just going to comment that in conversation with staff from Church of the Park last week, Ms. Rutherford and Counsel Anderson and I toured the pavilion, the operation at the fairgrounds, and they indicated that they would be operating in a similar fashion. Of course, there are differences because of the physical location, but in a similar nature to what they're doing currently. So I was very comfortable with that.
Yeah. I was out there, out to the fairgrounds today with the county commissioners, and we had a similar conversation with the Church of the Park folks. It sounded like too, they, they're working on figuring out how to kind of recreate the restroom shower facilities with some more mobile units and how those would be handled, I think will be really interesting. That, but they seem to be committed to using the model they're using out at the fairgrounds, which certainly has been a tremendous, tremendous success, so. which certainly has been a tremendous, tremendous success, so.
Correct. There's still work underway to clarify those pieces as well as continue discussions with the neighbors, you know, on their preferences and thoughts about how would operations work. Counselor Gonzalez, sorry.
Yeah, Counselor Gonzalez may have some thoughts on that.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. You know, yeah, the members from the Northgate Neighborhood Association, you know, they are concerned for two reasons. One is the actual change. Some really haven't been in the loop for several, for these several months, so they think it's something new. But the other one is really just to be kept in the loop. We had our last neighborhood association meeting a few days ago Thursday. You know, we're just starting to grow that neighborhood association, the chair. They're really doing a good job of doing outreach and it's these kinds of actions that cause them sometimes to give up and not attend. You know, and I did tour the fairgrounds site also and inside, well managed. I mean, it's very well organized and I'm hoping that it's giving our neighbors that are living inside there a little bit of hope. But you know, this isn't a prison, so these people can come and go. And the one thing that they hadn't really thought too much about was the impact on the local neighborhood, specifically the paths that these people have to use to access our city, you know, which could be stores, convenience stores and bus stops, for example. You know, I tend to support this motion, but because, you know, once the fairground site is closed, I mean, we do need some more options. But if anything, the only, the other last comment I wanted to raise from my neighbors is, you know, they're really trying to ask the operators to prioritize the most vulnerable, families, women and people with kids, you know, so that's really one of the things they did want me to share.
Okay, great. All right. Anyone else? Yes, Counselor Nordike?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Gonzalez, I appreciate your concerns and I appreciate the fact that you, like many of us, have toured the shelter. I went to the Fairgrounds Shelter unannounced a couple of times just to see how things were going when they weren't expecting any of us or any other elected official present. Every time I went, it was spotless. Every time I went, it was well managed. Every time I went, there were people who are coming and going to their jobs, coming and going to medical appointments. There are several people who, according to the Church of the Park, transitioned out of that shelter into permanent housing.
That's right.
We all know that temporary shelter is not a long-term solution. I know that a street corner is not a home. I know that a tent is not a home. We, we are, as you know, simultaneously pursuing long-term solutions like Sequoia Crossings, like we voted earlier tonight. And I also know from visiting and talking with the unsheltered by myself, on my own, no handholders, no filters, that this is, this is really helping people. And I would encourage the, the Northgate Neighborhood Association to consider checking out the facility or actually go down to the fairgrounds right now and see for themselves how well-run that facility is. And I think that might perhaps alleviate some of the concerns that they have. Their concerns are well taken. I appreciate you bringing them forward. But I, we already have some success stories coming out of this other shelter. So that gives me hope that we can do it again and again, save people and bring them in from out of a very cold spring. So I'll be voting in favor, but thank you so much for bringing the concerns forward from your neighborhoods.
Yeah. What I, what I heard today and have the, the other time I've been out there really is that if you have the level of management, and that's what appears to be moving along with the, the understanding of these kinds of larger homeless projects. If you have the kind of case management, case assistance, all of the services, they really are a success moving people back into housing. I mean, that's really what they're up to. So I, I think, I think as the neighborhood gets a, an understanding of what's going on out there, gets a chance. I hope we can get some folks out to Northgate who are actually experiencing it to share and to answer those kinds of questions because that's exactly, I think, which every neighborhood that is looked at for this kind of program has that reaction, you know? Is it managed? Is it going to be a blight in the neighborhood? I think so far we've had real success out there, I think. But it's got to have that level of management support. It just, it just has to. It can't be a, like, like we've got in those two parks, we cannot have that start up again. That is so totally out of control because we just didn't set it up as a managed, a managed situation. I think that may be one of our next projects is to look at how to, how to retrieve what we've got over in those two parks or something to, to get a handle on this thing. And even then, all we have is a handle on it. There's so many, so many needs out there and they're so different. Virginia? Virginia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a question for Ms. Bennett. How has the communication been with the different neighborhood associations in the area? I know you and I have been on lots of phone calls with them and, and I know that we have a really great binder of lessons learned as we've grown. Has it been going well and have, are they, you know, getting their, their questions answered?
Well, I would say in this situation, I wish I had been at the meeting on Thursday night. I'm generally aiming for that and have had several conversations and, and set up some special meetings with just that intent. However, honestly, I had been under the understanding that the ability to do this work had already been approved and discussed back in the fall and would be just kind of, we, we were already implementing it. And literally, and that's why it was such a last-minute question even to you is, is I had already thought that was a, a feasible and, and approved use early on. And then when we realized we do have a question for council, I'm just kind of still in my feasibility approach, which is, is it even legal? Is the property owner even interested? Is it a wetland or not? And then I begin the conversation about, okay, so now operationally, what, what are we thinking? Who would be there? What are the access points, et cetera? So I, it all came very quickly together. But I wish I'd, I was, and I was literally still working on other locations, you know, last Thursday and Friday as well. And so I, I look forward to continued discussions with the team and I wish I'd been at the meeting Thursday night and hope we can set something up soon to keep talking.
Mayor, one more comment.
I completely trust that you're working hard on all of these different fronts. And I just bring that up because I know Counselor Gonzalez and I have just been, that has been the one concern from our neighborhood associations. And it's not that they're against it. They just need the communication to know what's coming so that they can be prepared or get their, their questions answered in a timely way. And, and I'm with you. I, I thought we were, you know, going down one path with that place. And so this was a new kind of thing for me to kind of readjust. I'm very excited for it. I think it's going to be, like everybody else has said, really a success. So just want to bring that, that forward and make sure the communication is, is going well.
Thank you. Counselor Gonzalez, did you have something?
Yeah, I just want to, I guess maybe connect a few dots. I think specifically with regards to this, the, the state, we're talking about two different things, right? But there's a third thing that we're not talking about. And I think this is where people I think are, are not connecting the final dot. And for example, when I, when I'm driving around between my house, my, my, my business here on Fairgrounds Road, visiting family, I'm getting on and off on Market Street.
Yeah.
Right? I'm driving by Salem Parkway.
Yep.
You know, now there's, you know, the state fairgrounds and then maybe Portland Road and then North Portland Road, which is close to the Kale Street. It's literally, now, the other day I drove around, I said, I'm going to, I see what I'm seeing, but maybe I'm going to, I'm going to try a different route. So I got off on Kubler, Mission Street going south. I drove around on Commercial, went down to Skyline. You know, I saw no homeless activity. You know, so that's the, that's the disconnect. I think that most people aren't, I think I'd want everybody to make that connection that it's just not one place. It's just this constant concentration around a specific area. And we're seeing it on a consistent basis, not just from one place. I mean, Church of the Park, like I said, I was impressed. I left feeling sad because, you know, the situation these people are in, but I really felt hopeful. But I think that's where the neighborhood association, that's the conversations. Most of them want to help these people, but it's just, it's everything else adding now. So that's, that's the last thing I wanted to share.
Yeah, it's, it's a really good question. I think it's a mix of all kinds of things. But one of them I hope we all keep in mind when we go by Market Street and the bridges where there's people living under them or out on the Parkway. That's what a homeless program by the state of Oregon looks like. And we're not going to keep, allow ours to stay looking like. We're going to fix that. I don't know if the state of Oregon will. They've got bills that will make it worse. So those are the kind of things I think we need to really keep track of. That's the program they're talking about, unfortunately, because it is, it does, does homeless people have just no good in terms of moving them along a continuum toward some sort of reemergence in the, in the larger community. So it, it's really too bad. Yeah. Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with these comments about, from Counselor Stapleton and Counselor Gonzalez. And it seems to me that there are some wards that are much more affected by this in other wards. And I would include in that Counselor Gonzalez's Ward 5, Counselor Stapleton's Ward 1 and my Ward 2, which is where Cascade Gateway Parks is. So those are the wards we really have to look at. And it would be great to have a greater dispersal area of these folks who do need help. And, and I would hope that Gretchen Bennett and the city manager would look at that, keep that in mind when they are looking for other places to help our neighbors who are, don't have shelter.
Right. Counselor Hoy?
Maybe, I don't know, Counselor Hoy's raising his hand here, maybe it's Ward 6 too, but, but those are the, it's more the inner wards that are, that have concern about that than the, than the outer wards.
I'm sorry, I completely disagree.
Yeah, I think.
With that statement. And I just want to, I don't think that this is a productive conversation.
Yeah.
I think that there's homelessness in every, every community, in every part of every community. It's varying degrees, but we're all impacted by it and we ought to be focusing on some solutions. And I, I guess I'm confused on what we're, we're talking about. Oh, my ward has it and these wards don't. But we're all impacted by a significant degree. And the, really, the folks who are, who are homeless are the people who are really impacted. They're the ones living on the street and we need to be focusing on, on some solutions to that.
Yeah. Thank you, Counselor. Jim?
Yeah, I just, I want to talk a minute about the takeaway that I left the pavilion with when I visited there. And that was truly the success of it. And when we were talking to the folks that were running it, the question came up, what do we need to address the homeless issue? And they were clear. We need about 40 of these places.
Exactly.
If we really are going to address the issue and be successful, we need 40 of them. Even though it may take one at a time, we need to recognize that it's going to take a lot of strength from this council to get more of them throughout the city and we need to be focused on that.
Okay. Yes, Counselor? Trevor?
I, I, I think this is a good conversation, but we may be straying a little bit from, from the topic. I just want to say that I attended the same thing that Counselor Lewis did with you, Mayor Chuck Bennett and, and Counselor Gonzalez. And I think what they were saying is you need to have 40 campsites to make the, the site feasible and pencil out in terms of, you know, having, you know, what is it, the, I can't think of it. But you get enough people together that you can actually staff it. And I think that what they were saying is they'd like to see two or three like in the next year and then move eventually to five. I don't remember hearing them say that they wanted to move to 40. So I think it's 40 campsites and a managed site at a maximum.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else under information reports anyone wants to check in on? Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, yeah. Counselor Hoy makes, makes good points. And I didn't mean to say that the wards that I picked out are the ones that are getting, I'll just put quotes around it, stuck with the problem. It's our city's problem and we all ought to take care of it, wherever that is.
Yeah, I know I get email from people who are out in the Kubler Road area asking about what is that mess on Market Street all about? So it's, it's a citywide. I think everyone in town feels the pressure of this.
And Mr. Mayor, just a reminder, we're still under five, so we need to vote on this.
Yep. Oh, I'm sorry, are we?
We're not to information reports yet. We're still on 5A.
We voted on it, didn't we?
No.
Okay, we'll vote again. Ruthie, did you have a?
We voted on the, the measure that Anderson pulled.
I appreciate all this help. Let's go on, let's finish this information report thing. I thought we had voted and it did pass, Counselor.
We did not, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. We have not voted on this and it didn't pass yet. It will, I'm sure, but it hasn't.
We voted on my poll, which we, we looked at before, my poll on, on Marine Drive right-of-way. We haven't voted on the emergency.
Ruthie, do we need to, do we need to vote on this?
Yes, we need to vote on 5A.
Okay.
Counselor Phillips?
Yes.
Counselor Young, absent. Counselor Gonzalez?
Yes.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye, okay. Now, information reports. By the way, at some point, I hope if we're going to have stuff come flying onto the agenda, we'll get a clearer picture of where this stuff is. I, I really didn't have it showing up anywhere on mine, so it'd be helpful. Okay, anything on information reports? Counselor Stapleton?
Yeah, I would love to hear from our city forester on the Salem 2020 Annual Tree Report. Is he on the line?
No, but Patricia is.
Mayor, I don't know if Mylan is on. But Patricia Farrell is here and can, and can provide a quick overview.
Okay.
Great. Yes, good evening, Patricia Farrell, not the urban forester, but Parks and Natural Resources Planner. Yes, so the 2020 Annual Tree Report, I mean, I feel like it's a little bit out of date now after we had that big ice storm. But it was, for the last few years, we've been pulling together all the different information that we have for our different tree planting projects, just to try to consolidate them in one sort of calendar year report for council to look at, so you can get a sense of the type of work, the number of trees that are getting planted every year for, through our various contracts and also through our urban forester, urban forestry section. So yeah, it's a little bit out of date because it is already, you know, March and it did end in December. But, but as you can see, we planted hundreds of trees. We've increased the number that we've planted this year and the urban forestry section is doing a great work with the tree inventory and also with outreach. We had kind of a rough year because of the pandemic. So we were really happy that we were able to get as many trees planted as we did.
Virginia, anything?
Yeah, thank you so much. I just had a, a couple of questions. I did see that there were different types of programs that you use. Is it Rapidon or, or something like that? I was wondering, maybe I can just email him separately or you and, and figure out what those were. But also just seeing all the different ways that you're trying to increase tree canopy and some really fun options and, and great ones that maybe haven't been started yet. And I was also wondering if you have thought about at all adding a kind of rebate for folks who are able to plant trees on private property. I didn't see any kind of program for people planting on private property on, on list of things to do. Is that something that we could maybe look into? Yes, actually, we are looking into that. We're going to start with a tree survey going out to people in the city to ask about what would it take for them to, to plant trees on their own property? You know, what are the incentives that would motivate them or what are the things that are barriers to them planting trees? Because we know that if we ever really want to keep increasing our tree canopy, we need to have private property involved. So we are definitely looking at that. And rebates are one idea or discounted trees or, you know, free, free planting. I mean, things like that. We're kind of looking at all those different options. That's great. Thank you. I did see another fun one on there where you wanted the, the ideas that the neighborhood associations would compete for tree canopy. And I thought that was hilarious and fun. And I thought if they're not up for it, maybe my fellow counselors are up for it and we can just kind of do something fun here, so. There you go. Thank you. Thank you for the report. It was great.
Hey, anyone, anyone else on information report? Yeah, Jim?
Well, I'm going to bring this up. I hope I don't step in it. I, I was talking to someone the other day about some programs that they have in cities like Seattle and, and Boston where they're actually planting fruit trees. where they're actually planting fruit trees in the inner city. And I was, I was impressed. I mean, it made sense to me. You know, I don't know about the idea of walking down the street and having all the rotten apples on the sidewalk, but I like the idea of walking down the street and picking an apple off a tree. So I'm just curious if there's any, any feasibility of doing something like that or not.
You know, that idea comes up a lot because people are interested in having more food available. And so we're looking at that more in community gardens. The issue with doing it as street trees is, as you mentioned, they can be messy. They then attract wildlife that then get hit by cars. And so street trees are not necessarily the best place to have fruit trees, but community gardens are. The, the issue there is just making sure that we have a really dedicated crew of people to take care of them because they are, they do take more management for pruning and sometimes spraying. Sometimes you have to, you know, take care of, of insects or you go organic and go that way. But either way, you're going to have fallen fruit. Who's going to collect it? Can we take it to the food bank? So there's a lot of issues and questions before we start doing that.
Anyone else on any of the other information reports? Okay. Okay, we'll go to first readings.
An ordinance relating to wastewater pretreatment, amending SRC 74.030050410455 and 500.
Okay. Councillor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move City Council conduct first reading of ordinance Bill 2-21, adopting wastewater industrial pretreatment regulations and scheduling a second reading of the ordinance.
Second.
Second by Lewis. Any discussion? Okay, Ruthie? Call that roll?
Councillor Young, absent. Councillor Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councillor Hoy?
Aye.
Councillor Nordike?
Aye.
Councillor Lewis?
Aye.
Councillor Stapleton?
Aye.
Councillor Anderson?
Aye.
Councillor Phillips?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay. And now, uh, second readings.
An ordinance relating to stormwater and floodplain overlay zone, amending SRC 601.075. Councillor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councillor Hoy?
Aye.
Councillor Nordike?
Aye.
Councillor Lewis?
Aye.
Councillor Stapleton?
Aye.
Councillor Anderson?
Aye.
Councillor Phillips?
Aye.
Councillor Young, absent. Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay, motion passes. I don't see anything further on the agenda, so we are adjourned.